And we have one ahead for tonight as we do the 2022 executive program budget. So Jesse, I'll let you get started.
Absolutely. One second here. I am going to share my screen as we record the meeting. This is now fighting with me. That's fine. Okay, perfect. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for convening as the committee of the whole this evening. Before us tonight is discussion and review of the 2022 executive budget proposal. The summary here on the first page, just at a very high level before you this evening, is a balanced budget that is required by state law, and that comes to you in the form of a document that does address department needs across the entire organization within the fiscal constraints that we have before us. We do maintain all of the municipal services, as noted there. We are looking at one-plus-mile of road improvements. Now, that is a combination of reconstruction, but also the higher-level maintenance, like the resurfacing recently carried out here in the village as well. Brings forward a proposes a reasonable tax rate of $5.89 per thousand, which is up about four cents from last year. And the adjustment to that tax rate is based upon the additional levy generated through our net new construction levy adjustment, as well as a new concept this year of taking the programming, rather, the unused levy carried forward adjustment. So in prior years, when this consumer price index was lower, the village was, in a sense, hamstrung by the amount of expenditures it could have under the expenditure restraint program. So we didn't levy the maximum amount because frankly, we couldn't spend that amount because, again, the expenditure restraint program. That said, with CPI coming in at 3% approximately, that allows us to take this unused levy carried forward adjustment, combine that with the net new construction levy adjustment. So that is part of this budget as well. We have ongoing debt management. We do comply with both levy limits and expenditure restraint programs with the state compliance programs, and our fund balance policy is complied with as well. So looking at the expenditure summary for the budget as it breaks down quite a bit to work through here. This is a pretty heavy slide, but that said, just want to touch on items. There are some portions of this slide that go into greater detail later on in the slideshow. However, starting with the general fund, we're looking at an overall uptick of 3%, broken down by a program area within the general fund. We're looking at upticks, generally speaking, across the board in response to 2% colas for all non-represented employees, all of the cost of living adjustments for collective bargaining reasons, benefit upticks, as well as insurance premium adjustments, and Wisconsin retirement system contributions on behalf of the employer. Under general government, that two-point outside of those items, under general government, you're seeing that uptick primarily with the additional election costs. We are anticipating four elections next year. But to back up a bit, general government covers village administrator, finance department, village board, legal counsel, clerk's office, and in general, village hall. The police department, you're seeing a bit of an uptick in their bottom line there. Again, that's based upon some collective bargaining adjustments. The the police department portion of the budget does look a little bit different as Chief Cappanera worked very hard to consolidate items within his budget in order for better oversight, such things as training, instead of being spread across three different program errings, areas being administration, police operations, and building, all put it under administration in his budget, all the training costs under administration in his budget, because it's the administrators in the police department that oversee the training requests and whether they are a go or no-go. So it is much easier oversight and tracking with regards to consolidating line items such as that. Contractual services is another example within the police department budget whereby they consolidated that to better track that, because, again, it is administration that oversees such things. Parks and Recreation, a pretty status quo. That's a benefit-related uptick there. What is plugged in for the Parks and Recreation budget is, quite frankly, a status quo budget so as not to predetermine anything for the incoming director. This was discussed at length with the outgoing director and also discussed with the Park and Rec Board. Oh, I did skip Public Works. That's what I get for having small print. Public Works, we're seeing an uptick there in Public Works. This is where we are seeing not only those benefit allocations, but also to the addition of a crew person within Public Works to help out across the different operations and labor pools, which is why you don't see a significant uptick within the Public Works line item, because, again, that additional crew person is spread across such areas as engineering, parks and rec, and other building maintenance areas as well. But that an additional crew person is plugged in and programmed for the Department of Public Works. Parks and Recreation spoke to the Woodlawn Cemetery. You're seeing a significant increase there primarily because we are looking to program more dollars towards the mowing services and the same thought process as trying to attract solid seasonal help. We are struggling with getting a contractor or an individual who would contract with us to do that mowing. So therefore, we are looking to sweeten the pot, so to speak, and help hopefully attract someone who is reliable and can help maintain the Woodlawn Cemetery. Community development, very small uptick there with regards to that's benefit-related. Inspections, you are seeing about a 7.7% uptick that is primarily based upon the benefit items I spoke to earlier, but also the software licensing and support of our new permit software package. Contributions to recreation and aquatics are down a bit, and really, that looks towards a lower because we're not we're not anticipating folks coming back year over year. We're seeing folks coming back, the seasonal folks coming back at a lower rate of pay, which is why we're seeing and anticipating that downtick there. Again, in conversations with the outgoing Park and Rec Director, we feel confident with that forecast. Then the unclassified is the wage reserve whereby the budget is adopted with that wage reserve account. That then is transferred out to the individual departments when the cost of living adjustment takes place, when the merit increases take place, when any other pay adjustments take place. So the reason that that's a bit of a misnomer when you're seeing a 93% uptick there because that 2021 figure is actually that post-allocation number. That is what is left in that wage reserve account after the 1-1 split in 2021 was allocated out, after all of the merit adjustments were allocated out. So that is what is left in that unclassified account. So it seems like it's huge spike, but it actually would be a fairly status quo, generally speaking.
And also the contingency account.
And the contingency account. Thank you. So any items spent out of contingency are also taken out of that 2021 number. Moving into the special revenue funds, we're seeing some upticks here. The Park and Open Space Fund being driven by projects. The Park and Recreation Facilities Fund, again, being driven by projects, so a little bit of a downtick there. Revolving Loan Fund, a significant downtick primarily just lack of activity within that fund. The Woodlawn Capital Fund is zeroed out. The library is actually seeing a 0.2% decrease in expenditure allocation there. And actually, that's where the ARPA advantage came in by plugging in and utilizing ARPA funds for those capital projects that we're looking to take care of. Towards the end of this year, we're actually able to stabilize and slightly decrease the outgoing expense to the library under that maintenance of effort formula. The Room Tax Fund rebounds a bit, but unfortunately, that that quite a bit of that goes right back out to the door under state law. 70% of our room tax revenues go out to the tourism entity. Fire Protection and Rescue Fund, we see an uptick there. This is phase two of those market adjustments for the paid-on-call pay rates. Also adjust, this is the catch-up of the adjustments made late last year for the chief and assistant chief. This also programs the transition of the office assistant, administrative assistant, from a part-time position to a full-time position within the fire department. It's important to note that the fire department is a special revenue fund like these others that we're speaking to. So this speaks to helping to be offset by service fees as well as town cost sharing. The Environmental Fund, we're seeing a downtick in activity. Director Thomas and I have been working closely with our new consultant, albeit about two years old now, and the Wisconsin DNR to really take the tact of doing what is necessary here. We don't want to inadvertently open any can of worms with additional environmental testing. However, we want to meet what is being dictated to us by the DNR. And so we're seeing a drop in activity in that fund, which is why you're seeing the reduction there. The Recreation Fund is down slightly. That's programming-based expenses. Or excuse me. The Aquatics Fund, pardon me, is down slightly. Again, that speaks to younger, newer lifeguards at a little bit of a lower side of the pay scale, so not a significant drop there. The Recreation Fund upticks, and that is program supplies. We're seeing some additional trips being programmed as we rebound back from COVID protocols and whatnot and restrictions. The American Rescue Plan Fund, I will be touching on that later on in the slideshow as as with debt service funds, the proprietary funds being the utilities and capital improvement. The one last item I'd like to touch on on this slide is the fiduciary fund being the Woodlawn Perpetual Care. That is down just because we are seeing lower interest earned on those monies that sit in the bank for us. Moving into the next slide, kind of backing out to a higher level again of looking at the financial plan of expenditures. We're looking at about a 2.7% increase in overall expenditures from the previous year, looking at the general fund, special revenue funds, debt service, capital improvement. That overall increase in expenditures is actually lower than the Consumer Price Index increase. So again, what we're spending in order to conduct business is actually less than the price of doing business per the Consumer Price Index. Our next slide here, just talking about the tax levy support to the special revenue funds. As I mentioned, the the Library Fund is seeing about a little bit less, however, in the neighborhood of about $558,000, $559,000. The Fire and EMS Fund is seeing about $697,000 and noting the contributions from the township towards those particular operations. The Recreation Fund, about $9,900, almost $10,000 of levy support. Program fees are the main offset in that particular fund. Park and Open Space, that is a historical reestablished over the last couple of years, historical tax levy allocation, and that stays within that fund. So it's $35,000 annually, and if that is not spent, that balance stays within that fund. We are looking at a January 1 balance of approximately $90,000 being available for park and open space-type projects. The Park and Rec Committee, in my meeting with them, did note that they would like to see this adjusted over time as the village continues to grow and as park amenities continue to grow, just to ensure we maintain a proper approach to parks' maintenance in future years. That said, we do program $35,000 in the executive budget as based upon the current currently adopted five-year CIP. This funding formula, again, being able to keep unused funds within this program area is adequate funding. That said, we will have to keep an eye on it in future years. The Aquatics Fund is seeing a similar level of tax levy support as previous years. The other special revenue funds are noted up above with their particular funding sources. That I will not get into at this time. Looking at debt service, this is always an important part of a municipal operation, and how how does a municipality manage its debt? First of all, it's important to note, we are not looking at any new general obligation debt. However, what we are seeing is an increase of programmed funds within the debt service account because we are looking at an advance from the debt service account to the impact fee account. The impact fees being paid to offset the municipal services facility, the DPW building construction, and the police department construction is not keeping pace with what was forecasted in the original report set forth many years ago. So we are looking at an advance out of the debt service account. That said, our actual debt payments towards debt do continue to come down. The most of the debt that we carry is in deals with tax incremental financing district projects or our utility-related. Speaking of which, we are looking at some project debt being proposed in 2022 within the utility. Our debt service tax rate, 21 cents out of $1,000 of assessed value, so again, very responsible there. And we do continue to look at any available refinancing options that are available to us, and we would bring those forward as they do become available. As a point of illustration, just looking at tax levy support by program area over the better part of the last decade. You know, we're seeing over the course of the last seven years, we're looking at the general fund tax levy support going up by about 7%, library by 16%. We're also seeing some downticks in our debt service. And going back to that last slide, that is where we are continuing to pay off our debt, albeit we do have to forward to offset some of the expenses with the MSF and the police department improvements. Capital equipment is down slightly over that time. But that said, I think there's better use of options out there being lease fleet programs, lease options, better specking of equipment, and just responsible, much more thought being put into the equipment purchases. Capital projects have seen upticks over this time, and the fire department, very similar to the Park Fund, where it receives a consistent allocation over years whereby unused funds are banked specifically within that fund for capital projects in the fire department. For example, 2022 executive budget calls for allocation of $156,000 towards capital, the and I'll speak to this a bit later in the presentation, but the fire department has only programmed about $60,000 worth of capital projects for next year. So the balance of that 156 would stay within that particular fund for use in the future. Shifting gears here, taking a look at another policy item, being that the fund balance level exceed 25% of general fund expenditures. You can see over the last handful of years, we have, in fact, maintained that policy compliance. I do need to note that $810,000 number has changed to 772,446 of programmed fund balance. That is because unfortunately, I typed this slide prior to us calculating out that unused levy carried forward adjustment, thus maximizing our tax levy, and also, we did receive some updated information from the state of Wisconsin. So we are actually programming less fund balance in the 2022 executive budget. That said, the fund balance versus general fund expenditures comes in at about 32.5% or 33% as noted there. Taking a quick snapshot of the prepared proprietary funds being water and wastewater. On the water side of things, we're looking at revenues over expenses with producing a net operating income of about $42,200. On the wastewater side of things, we're looking at net operating income of about $891,000 at year's end. As a reminder, proprietary funds are standalone accounts that operate very similar to businesses whereby user fees drive the accounting, if you will. As mentioned, wanted to touch on highlights of our capital funds, looking at the overall expenses up top. As I mentioned, there is the $156,000 allocation for fire department capital. They are programming about $60,000 of use in the form of a rescue boat and some some station improvements. Utilities, we're looking at about $5.7 million of capital projects. That said, the highlights include a control panel consolidation, cost share with our road program improvement whereby utilities under the segment of road that is being rebuilt. That is their cost share. Water meter conversions are ongoing. We are about 45% of the way through the village, so that is ongoing. The Green Bay Road Area Sewer Rehab Project, that is a pretty significant project for us. Many all-in, the one-ton pickup being the chassis and all of the associated equipment price, and then a UV crane for the treatment plant itself. Switching over to the general side of the house, we're looking at the road replacement program being funded, the sidewalk program continuing to be upticked so we can continue to do additional rehabilitation of our sidewalk and reduce trip hazards and places of disrepair. We do have roof repairs scheduled for the MSF building. We do have an evidence room storage project in the police department. We do continue the police squad lease program at a total, including the previous leases that are currently on the books, of $58,992 for next year. Protective gear, body worn and in-squad camera upgrades. Then the Public Works is coming forward with a creative approach or an innovative approach to a equipment issue that they have. Right now, we have several trucks that are specialized, if you will, where they serve a specific function. And if they're not being used for that function, they sit idle, one of them being a the leaf collection truck where it's a large box on the back of a truck, and unless we're chipping or collecting leaves, it really sits idle quite a bit. So what they have brought forward is the the concept of purchasing a hitch-and-go truck. So what this does is you have your truck and the chassis, and you can actually change out the attachments that go on the back, whether it be and what's proposed for next year is that chipper box to go on the back, but you can also purchase things such as water tanks or the tree waterings and flower waterings that we need to do and flatbed and other different attachments, basically making it a multi-use truck with a simple change-out of attachments. Again, an innovative approach to equipment there. We are looking at the lease of a sweeper, a street sweeper in the public works. We are, again, kind of easing into the fleet lease program with our public works for budgetary reasons. We did scale that back from the initial thought of three. We are looking at two light-duty trucks being leased within the Public Works Department, our computer replacement program, and then Office 365 is placed within the budget as well. Touching on the special revenue fund created for American Rescue, American Rescue Plan or ARPA-funded projects. So the annual federal audit trigger is $750,000. If we exceed that through a culmination of grant dollars, we would trigger a federal audit. Staying well below that, even considering the grants we have been pursuing outside of ARPA, we are looking at proposed programs of the following. Fire Department kitchen upgrades, replacement of the Highway 60 light poles on the bridge, village hall telephone system upgrade, and then a SCADA system upgrade for the utility. We are currently working on a 900 megahertz signal technology, which is proving to be a bit unreliable over time, and the system is just getting long in the tooth. And what this will do for the utility is ensure proper communications with the system to the plant and the operators with regards to are there any malfunctions going on? Are there any backups occurring? Are there high flows or low flows anywhere? Much better system for us to be able to react much quicker versus the current SCADA system. Those are the proposed projects for ARPA funds within 2022. That said, it's very important to point out that any ARPA project prior to being carried out will be brought to the village board for action and approval prior to commencement with the project. Again, that all plays to the strong effort to be very transparent with these ARPA funds, being formal action for each particular project, a standalone special revenue fund being created. And again, with with the thought of being as upfront and transparent with those funds as possible. Another important note here is one of the priorities identified by the committee, the whole, is looking at roads and infrastructure. That said, those projects do take time for design, engineering, and proper bidding. So we are looking at those in future years of this American Rescue Plan Act program. So those are not forgotten. Those are forthcoming. It's just those take time to spin up and have a project proposal brought forward. So looking at the tax rate that is proposed of $5.89 per thousand as it applies to a $250,000 average home, that generates a $1,472 tax bill, or about $12.50 more than last year. How is that tax bill broken out among the the program areas here? We're seeing the the majority of it, 64% going towards the general fund, but then again, that is the largest portion of our budget. We're seeing another significant piece of that towards capital projects. Park and Open Space is noted there. The capital equipments breakouts are noted there, and just a very good representation of how the $1,400 tax bill would be broken out across the various areas. Looking at that $1,400 tax bill, that's $1,472.50 to be precise, if you will. When you take that that village portion of your tax bill along with average water fees and average sewer fees and combine that, we're looking at a combined combined annual cost for a resident here in Grafton of about $2,575. And what that gets over the course of a year is police, fire, and EMS service, Parks and Recreation programs and facilities, library services, updated roads, cleaned off roads with snow removal operations, fresh drinking water and sanitary sewer services, as well as other municipal services, inspections, clerk's office licensing, elections, and what have you. So quite frankly, very proud of that figure being quite manageable for what we offer in that amount in a given year. So that is an overview of the 2022 executive budget proposal. I want to thank all of staff for their efforts in helping to combine and bring forward responsible requests and then working to refine said requests as the fiscal constraints became more and more apparent. And also a special thank you to Administrative Services Director Sudhar and Administrative Assistant Andrea Sorak in my office for compiling the budget book for distribution this evening. With that, that is the 2022 executive budget proposal.
Thank you. And I could review the clarification just want to identify that the levy has been matched up?
Yes, correct.
So any changes to this is not an addition, but it has to be a change. So we want to do add to any particular program that has to come from a different program. Typically, what we do is run through departments. All the department heads have done a great job as far as submitting their budgets to administration for completion of the budget document. That's in front of you tonight. But I'll go through each department as we usually do every year. I'll start with this. Feel good about the budget that you provided? Yeah. Visiting services that you would like to be able to provide next year, 2022?
Yeah.
Thank you. Chief, fire?
We've, I think, we're pretty status quo. I just always want to remind everyone that we are facing a very challenging time for the fire department as been documented in a recent study conducted. And I just would encourage the village board to continue to be well aware of that problem and to constantly try to build, getting us to a point where we're not as reliant on volunteers as we are right now, which is causing a regular critical circumstance. So my plea is for you to keep that in mind. We haven't done that this year, but it's always needed.
Thank you very much. Public Works, what are your thoughts?
Great. I appreciate the admission of her person as he is definitely hit, so I appreciate the support on that.
A little bit of a rabbit out of a hat on that one. My name is Spex. Finding inspection. Finance.
I'm good.
Library.
Yeah, we're comfortable watching.
Yeah, all sorts of new stuff coming. Let's see. Park and Rec, I know you kind of alluded a little bit to status quo, we put in the director.
Correct, the the big comment coming out of the committee review was that special revenue fund that we keep an eye on that moving forward.
And administration.
Okay.
Okay, I'll open it up to the committee of the whole for any comments, questions on the presentation.
Jesse, and the first page under your budget summary, I just want to confirm that when you have maintained all municipal services, that would include library, community development.
Yes. Correct, yes, yep.
Comments, I I would like to see this budget include an opportunity to hire an additional staff person for the fire department. I also would like to see this budget would be up to need to increase the special revenue fund for parks and rest to forty five.
You have to identify where you would like to see that come from, because again, the levy is maxed out. Otherwise, we would just make it as a note. We can do a little research, but again, adding that comes from a different program. Questions?
Yeah, so there's a couple of things I want to say. So again, this year, looking at the public safety page, page one twenty one. There is the wrong number for total employment. Again, see thirty five total employees. And that is thirty three. That's also incorrect on page one twenty four. Where you're talking about, and the only reason I think it's incorrect is because you have said that there were no personnel adjustments for the police department.
Correct.
So last year we read thirty three and that takes into effect into account twenty two sworn officers. Two administrative police officers. Administrative assistants, five crossing guards and five support personnel, and that's thirty three.
Thirty five.
No, I don't get that. Twenty two and ten is thirty two and one is thirty three.
And administration.
Administration, no.
Yeah. So thirty five, twenty two officers includes the chief and the assistant chief. So twenty two sworn officers, etc.
If I can just interject, and I had mentioned that.
Yep.
The method ties when we did that, when I submitted that. I submitted it because we had requested two additional personnel. So I, when I, just being my first year during the budget, that was the way I submitted it. Because we requested it just because it was not approved. It should be reflected in the budget that we did request it, it just didn't get approved. So that was the reason I did that.
No, I'm not saying it's on anybody, I'm just saying it's been corrected in the past.
Didn't notice it.
So on page one twenty four, it's the same then. Under twenty twenty two executive.
No worries.
There's. Four patrol sergeants, one detective, and instead of sixteen police officers, that should be fourteen.
Absolutely, we will get that cleaned up for the final budget document, not a problem. Those positions, again, the there are no additional positions added to the police department. That that was a carryover from the initial request and we will make sure to get that cleaned up.
And I guess there's, I mean, I have a number of questions, I feel like we're really stressed for time, I'm not really sure, we have forty five minutes. And I I guess there's a couple of things, one is I'm not understanding how we're coming up with a position for Public Works and we're using that. In anticipatory. You know, going forward with the general fund. I I thought we had asked about that before in the past for other positions and that. We were told that, you know, those positions when we add our positions that they have to be sustainable. And we have to show how we're going to always pay for that every year. So I, that surprised me that we're coming, you know, the future, we're planning on the future for that.
Sure. A couple of things played into the ability to add that Public Works crew person position into the budget. Number one, we're able to actually utilize that tax levy carried forward adjustment. In prior years, under the expenditure restraint program, that was not an option to us. So we have a way to jumpstart that request, so there's not an expenditure restraint program. We have that ability to program that levy in that direction. But then, as we continue to update our efficiencies and we're seeing growth within the village. I believe that is sustainable for the long run.
A couple of other things, so. You know, we're looking at revenue and this year it looks like the fire department. In the end, will probably come up with more than a hundred thousand dollars in revenue from EMS call. It looks also like for this year, there's going to be some revenue from stock bill, about five thousand two hundred dollars. And for next year. Noting that Stockville may be participating to help fund the administrative assistant in the fire department. Along with some extra money that comes to the inspection and the fire chief. I think that's above a savings of sixteen thousand dollars. So I agree with Trustee Love about, you know, in the past, the Public Safety Committee has talked about adding on personnel. And in twenty seventeen, we talked about the three point program, where we were going to try to add somebody every year or two. We have added people over the last few years. But we are now, I mean, if anything now it's more of a crisis, we're talking about consolidation, I understand that. But we, I I mean, I I'm just not sure how that was missed. Chief Price, I was surprised that 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 I didn't see that in the budget, is that something you feel you don't need this year?
No, it is something we need, we need to build, we need to build up to a point where we can have reliable.
So I, Jesse, I would think that due to all the revenue that we had. And we're going to, we're going to increase revenue next year, that's a that's a spot where we could take some, you know, take some of that revenue and turn it into a position. We have savings going forward.
We also have fund balance programmed within the fire department special revenue fund. So I don't believe adding additional staff, knowing that there is fund balance program. In that special revenue fund, I I don't believe adding staff at this point would be a responsible use within that particular fund. Also, there are many, many moving parts to fire EMS right now within the county. We are looking at the potential for revenue from Sawville, albeit not guaranteed. We are looking at the potential from for mutual aid help by full time folks coming on board in Cedarburg and Sawville, but again, that's not set yet. So for us to make drastic changes at this point. I don't know if that would be, and we've got this large study that that we're inching towards, looking at different models. For us to continue to grow, I don't necessarily know if that would be the most responsible course of action. You know, that said, the need is apparent, there there's nobody in this room that will argue that. But that said, there are a lot of moving parts to that equation and any additional revenues from Sawville, should they come to pass. Through their budget process would not offset what we have. You know, in in the budget right now for an additional person in the fire department.
So I'm just going to reiterate that that's something that's important to me. Just the other, the last thing I'll say is just about this. And let me tell you, I have two other pages of questions, so that's a little bit concerning for me that I don't feel like I have time to ask those. I would also ask, because we've had this revenue spike. Due to runs that we would allow the office assistant or administrative assistant to start now. If that is something we have, we can show that we've had a hundred thousand dollars of revenue in the fire department. I would ask if that's something that she's all right with, that we could try to do that now.
That that would be a policy decision for the board. Frankly, we don't have that in place right now for this year. We don't know what those end revenues would be. And I understand that the chief wants to also explore the reclassification of that position. So so that's another discussion to be had at at the finance committee level.
We'll go through a few of mine, but I'll let somebody else talk there.
Yeah, just a couple of questions here, first of all, on page one fifty one. About the traffic control system, running about ninety seven thousand dollars. For for the the contractual services for for the traffic control on twelfth and I believe Washington. Um, I I see that the total we're thinking is going to be about ninety seven thousand dollars and we're thinking that we're going to have a twenty thousand dollar grant, is that about right?
We we have to front the money and then we get get paid back through that.
Yeah, there's about set in federal federal grants in the revenue side. Okay, so we have to expense the full amount of the project.
Is that, is that in the budget for a twenty thousand dollar grant?
Yes, yes, and also, yeah, yeah, and like I say, one of them was ninety percent. Payback, right? Yep. Yeah, yep, so there is money coming back from the state on the ERP and the traffic control study.
Okay, that's great. Second thing I want to ask is, you know, I I too am a bit concerned with, really concerned with the. As I look through the budget to see that we underestimated the total amount of increases that we were getting from the ambulance service. As I saw through the budget, I saw that we were about, we thought that we would see maybe another ninety thousand, a hundred thousand dollars in ambulance reimbursement. And I think I saw that it was, we were going to go the conservative way to not plan on that, is that something about right?
No. Are you, are you saying that we underestimated what we actually brought in?
No, that for next year, that you were going to increase fees, there's some increased fees coming through. And I do realize it's complicated because so much of yours is Medicare, there is an increase coming from Medicaid. And certainly, when it comes to private insurances, you know, there there is, there are increases that can come.
Numbers came from Ebix, correct?
Yeah, it's, it is very challenging to estimate, probably the biggest variable we saw this past, this current year that we're in. And last year, I guess, is the. Neighborhood systems that have failed periodically, and then we have to cover for them. That requires us to go to those communities, but we get revenue from that. So that becomes even harder to predict. Not to mention our own community has seen huge increases in calls this year, so it's been a very, it's a very, very difficult process.
I I understand, but I think as 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 a standard business practice, you kind of go into a budget. Kind of thinking that it's my best guess nation on what I think is going to happen. And you know, with our current trend of of increased amounts of EMS, you know, realistically, I think we've all understood that we're EMS that provides fire service. You know, perhaps, you know, in 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 the funding of an additional individual that may have been recommended by Trustee Love and also Trustee Harder. That maybe come in with a little bit more aggressive numbers on what we think we're going to be able to get out of the ambulance to be able to.
The numbers, numbers came directly from the ambulance.
What's that?
The number came directly from the ambulance builder, based on their estimate.
Every year we go to the analyst at Ebix, who's been incredibly accurate.
Yep.
Most, almost scary, scary, but that's this individual's job, but is to estimate that. But once COVID hit and it affected the community, it affected neighboring communities. It affected our organization. It it just threw all, it threw what had formerly been a very accurate estimate, really made it extremely difficult.
Well, the other thing is, lastly, on mutual aid chief, what, I mean, we do mutual aid, do we get reimbursed at all for mutual aid?
For resc, ambulance mutual aid?
Ambulance and fire.
For fire, no, there's no mutual aid reimbursement for fire at all, except for very unusual circumstances. But for ambulance service, when we go to another community with our ambulances and transport, which is probably in the very high ninety percent range. We we treat that like a transport in our own community, that person pays for that transport according to our fees. And that that is accounting for this big spike in our revenue. Which will, it could exceed for two thousand twenty one, it could exceed a hundred thousand. Very hard to be waiting. But we do get money back, and I think it is worth mentioning that sometime, you know, as a fire chief, I'm in kind of a bad position. Because I have some of you up there who are saying on occasion, maybe we shouldn't be helping these neighbors. You know, maybe we shouldn't be going, we should stay home. I have, I get put in kind of a tough position. And and then then we start, once we do lose both our ambulances, whether it's for our own call or maybe one here, one at port. Then I have to make movements, I have to call other communities, maybe Metlin, or to come up here. But it's it's very, very challenging to do that, and the thing I don't want people ever forget is Grafton. Had a failing EMS system for a couple of decades, you just weren't told about it. It's a fact, I was there, it was grossly failing. And the people that bailed us out are the communities that we're often going to now.
Yeah, no question that you're doing a great job on that.
No, I just want to explain that, it's very important that.
I appreciate that, I think that, you know, we've we've become one of the stronger, not the strongest department in in the community. And that's really due to your direction and your staff, and we appreciate that. Well, thank you very much. Lastly, just a quick, a quick comment here, and kind of disappointed and, you know, for record, kind of disappointed. I do understand that, you know, we have limitations that we didn't, weren't able to get a little something in for heritage and priority around this year in the budget.
Jesse, when's the next schedule?
Our public hearing, the November first.
And is that part of the board or is that?
It's part of the board, correct.
That's to five o'clock. Can be the whole. Prior to the public hearing, we definitely need to get other people's input. So let's go ahead and plan that.
Will do.
Jim, is there any way we can do that on just its own night, so we don't have a cutoff? You know, if if people have questions and.
Well, we used to do that Saturday, and if people, and that kind of went out of favor, we can do it on a Saturday again. I I don't, it doesn't matter to me, it's just that, you know, we'll be, you know, we'll be asking all of our department heads and everybody else coming in on a Saturday. I don't, I don't, I'm, I can make it, you know, I mean, if you guys think. Another three of the whole for next. For next quarter is enough, we can start it earlier, we can start at five o'clock.
Well, I I personally don't have any types of questions or comments that will change the bottom line, but I do have a lot of items I'd like to sit down with you all again, like I have. Yours before and. Well, just, there's some corrections, some updates and information, and there is here. A couple of, a couple areas where numbers weren't agreeing.
Stuff on time.
Highlights were. All identified, at least in my opinion, so I would do that on the side.
Okay, I wanted to do this as an hour of the whole for next quarter, or do you want to shoot for trying? Get consensus on a alternate day. Who are you against in my day? Library?
Oh, because we don't have libraries.
Libraries canceled. Is Monday?
Yeah.
Monday, up to what time? Well, I would say five o'clock, because you want.
I can't make that.
You make six o'clock? What's the six o'clock then?
Is that okay with everyone?
Six o'clock, Monday, the twenty fifth.
And that's true, for the twenty fifth at six, and then. Regular finances, if needed, on the first.
Can do.
And that's really going to be an extension of this, of today.
Yeah.
In fact. What we can do is we can just adjourn this meeting until the. Until we said the twenty fifth, right?
Yes, correct, next Monday.
So I entertain a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole board to Monday, October twenty fifth at six P M. I'll make that motion. Motion in a second, I'll favor.
All right.
Excellent, passes, I will. Motion to adjourn.